All right, well, we'll call this meeting to order and start with the roll call.
Okay, Commissioner Lazar.
Here.
Commissioner Kraft.
Here.
Commissioner Meyer.
Here.
And soon to be Commissioner Dukes.
Here.
And we are missing Commissioner Freitas.
Thank you. Commissioner Lazar is gonna lead us in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move to Oath of Office. Welcome aboard, Deborah Dukes. If you want to go ahead and read your oath of office.
Thank you. I, Deborah Dukes, do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California and the Charter of the City of Eureka, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter in the capacity of Commissioner for Planning Commission of the City of Eureka.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You passed the first test. Thank you.
Bravo.
Thank you. Adoring fans.
Yes, welcome aboard. Okay, well, we'll move to approval of the minutes for October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I had a question. I saw the email. Could someone help me understand what the issue was?
I think that they thought that someone had changed the file on their computer.
Okay.
Is that not how you understood it?
That might be how I didn't understand it.
Okay.
It sounded like they were concerned about the general plan conformance review for the county acquisition of the Kmart site not being included in the minutes. But I looked in the minutes and it says this item was removed from the agenda at the request of the applicant, and that's what happened, so.
Yeah, and we had announced at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah.
All right, so with that clarification, I will move approval of the minutes.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm taking this on faith. Aye.
All right, we will move to oral communications. This is an opportunity, if anyone here would like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda tonight, now would be your opportunity to do so. I don't have a view of anyone in Zoom for some reason, so I'll have to rely on you.
So if anyone on Zoom would like to talk during oral communications, you can raise your hand and we will call you, call on you and we'll have our IT person unmute your.
And this is for anything that's not on the agenda.
Awesome. We will continue on through. No public hearings tonight, so we'll move to old business. And just for some clarification, we can't take comment, public comment during, after this, okay. All right, we will pass it over, I think, to Commissioner Kraft for a commercial fishing subcommittee report.
Thank you. So those of you who have been following along will recall that, at my suggestion, the Planning Commission authorized this some months ago. We, through the chair, had a subcommittee that was appointed. One of those commissioners had to leave the Planning Commission. I soldiered on with substantial help from Swan Asbury Economic Development, manager for the City of Eureka and Kristen Kenyon, Director of Planning and Related Stuff. And I knew we would come across a fair amount of economic development stuff, so we looped in the Economic Development Commission pretty early on to invite their input and oversight. I will say that the ratio was higher than I expected of economic development to planning, but it is a Planning Commission thing, and in the end, we'll have a decision here about whether to forward the report to the city council, whether it needs more work, that kind of thing. So quickly, the process was, I developed a questionnaire, vetted that with some others. We interviewed five fishermen plus one former fisherman and about that many people who were either in ancillary businesses or are currently or served formerly on the city staff and were involved with things having to do with the fleet and with fishing in Humboldt Bay and offshore. Did the interviews, wrote up a set of notes, kind of iterated from there and came to a set of summaries and recommendations. I was pretty open to city staff input around what is practical. I don't think it makes sense to set up stuff that is pie in the sky or not achievable or not in the city's purview. So there are things that affect the fishing fleet that are not in this report because they're just not city things. There's some things in the report where it says this is a private industry thing or, you know, this is largely a state matter. Some of the highlights of recommendations, just to kind of jump to the back of the book. There's some real practical cost issues, ice fuel, accessibility of cold storage and how one can find that. And these, a number of these are longstanding. A number of these are maddening. There should be better access to the ice equipment than there is, just quite candidly. And why fuel that comes through Humboldt Bay is more expensive here than it is in other places. Same gasoline going off there, but our fishing fleet, along with, you know, those of us in the room who put gas in cars, pay more locally. There are, on the other end, buying fish, fish buyers, more would be better. That's largely a private industry thing, but there have been small happenings that have helped. And the kind of ongoing, but also some growing direct to consumers, so the dockside market shows a little bit of promise. And we did uncover some things along the way, like there is a perception among some fishermen that something in Eureka code disallows selling fish on the Eureka side of the bay. Not everybody thought that, but a number of people did, and I think we track down that that is not in fact the case. That with the right business licensing, as I understand it, and I'll look at city staff to correct me if I get that wrong, that is possible. It may not be highly practical. The docks aren't set up perfectly for it, but it is possible. There's some things like dredging, where the city staff is quite supportive, but is somewhat handicapped, and they would say by perceptions of the quality of fill that has gotten the dredge spoils, which was, you know, much, much worse when we had a pulp mill and other things dumping into the bay than it is now. And so the costs of the current method of disposing of those spoils makes dredging less practical. So there's some stuff in there about what might happen with that. Can't get, talk to fishermen for more than five minutes without hearing about the status of regulation. That is largely a state issue, but it is certainly one that they're up against. And, you know, I think if the fishing fleet could be granted one wish, it'd probably be along the lines of, God, I wish we could just be more like Oregon. There is, I think, acceptance and some debate around what a working waterfront would best be and the amount of visitor-serving touristy things that allow a working waterfront to be lively and attractive and what you need to protect to really be able to do the hard work of supporting a fishing fleet. And I think the single most important thing for the Planning Commission to consider is what we want to recommend to the city council about zoning, how that comports with the Director Kenyon's work on the local coastal plan going forward. And I think my recommendation would be that we continue to see seed a commercial as the jewel in the crown for that and keep the zoning restrictive and interpret it that way. And in some ways, the rules are pretty supportive of the fishing industry now, but there have been at least episodes where properties have been allowed to go for uses that are arguably not consistent. There's a sense, and this came from some feedback from the Economic Development Commissioners, especially Commissioner Calder, that we should pay attention to what works in other places. I've heard that from fishermen as well, that, you know, there's some good things in Bellingham, Washington. Learn from them. There's some good things in Newport, Oregon. Learn from them. So that was beyond the scope of the project that I raised my hand to do, but it is worthy coaching nonetheless. I think the process from here is for the Planning Commission and the Economic Development Commission to receive the report, decide if you want it to be forwarded to the council as is. If you want, I'm willing to do some extra work if that's called for, recognizing still that city staff are key constituents. I would encourage people who are interested in this topic and pick up the paper, not to just read the summaries that I wrote. There's a lot of richness in the actual interview notes, and you may decide that something that Leroy Zerlang said that I didn't bring forward or something that Ken Bates and Linda Hildebrand spoke to that didn't make it into the survey notes are as good or better than some of the things that I did bring forward. I think our next item will be on more general planning stuff, but I've kind of encouraged to trust the process here with city staff. Two years ago, Director, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lazar and I did some work with city staff on vacation rental items, and I was pleased to see how that played out in our next item. And, you know, I think the city staff took it to heart. I wouldn't expect them to take every recommendation we ever made. I'm an amateur at this, and, you know, so I spent fifteen hours interviewing people and five hours writing something. That's not the same as having studied for a degree and doing it every day. But, so I do think that the processes going forward, you know, I'm encouraged that if we do take this forward to the city council and the city council embraces it, then it'll end up in the places where it should. It's a marathon, not a sprint. And I think with that, I'm happy to answer questions, and it looks like we've got at least a couple of people who want to comment as well.
Yeah, thank you for your work on that. I think it was robust and really interesting, and you interviewed, I think, a nice variety of people. We can start with the commissioners, I guess, or staff that have questions for Commissioner Kraft.
I just had one, and I apologize if this is already in there. I didn't read the interviews as well, so I missed them at the beginning and then. So the processing facility next to where Anglin used to be located kind of shuttered last winter, if I recall, right before commercial crab season started. I want to say in like November, December, if I, and I don't, I didn't track it after that, but I, and it seemed like processing was shifting up to Oregon or something. Do you, did you get any insight into that? Am I wrong in that?
This is the facility Pacific Choice leases?
Yeah.
I don't have chapter and verse on that. There may be others in the room who know it better, but it has largely shuttered. They're not processing there. My understanding is they are taking in crab and taking it north for processing. The lease with the city specifies that they supply ice to the fishing fleet and that, if I understand, what I, if I heard correctly, the hours that that's supposed to happen are, and it's memorialized in the lease, are quite a bit more than the roughly nine to two when you can get it, nine AM to two PM situation, which, if you think about trying to go out and actually fish, that's not a great window. But yes, so the facility's not completely shuttered, but it's largely unused. And, you know, a layman's way of oversimplifying would be Pacific Choice is sitting on it.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure. I appreciate you clarifying because that seemed to be troubling.
Anybody want to fill in additional blanks on that question? Okay.
Okay, well, if anyone would like to make comment on this, that's sitting here. We can start in the crowd. I guess we could follow procedure for a hearing would be appropriate. So you'll have three minutes. This isn't conversational. It would just be comment. And she'll help you there. And then just take a moment and state your name as well.
Yeah, Ken Bates. Let's see, where to start? I have been in Humboldt Fishermen's Marketing Association since nineteen seventy-four. I served on the board from nineteen eighty-two until two years ago. The thing that I did for the association was looking at land use and zoning and planning. And I'm still doing those kind of things. I'm doing it for a different association now, California Fishermen's Resiliency Association. I'm really, really happy that the Planning Commission and the staff are willing to start this conversation. I'm probably either way too much of an optimist or needed to have counseling, but I have been trying to get this conversation going for years and years and years in this particular city government. So I think it's a very positive thing to see if the city is willing or interested in keeping the fishing fleet here, you know, or at least keeping a part of it here. There's lots of things that we see that are problematic. You know, you mentioned Pacific Seafood Group. These bigger companies, their business model is such that a lot of their fish that they were taking, they were sending them overseas for processing, you know, and they've shortened up their processing in various places. Pacific Seafood Group is known for shutting plants down and sort of hibernating, you know, and moving to other areas. And so it's sort of like keeping their foot on the thing so that nobody else is going to move in there and work. A couple of things about the things that you're going to consider when you start to look at zoning and stuff. Again, I'm a zoning purist, probably a sickness that I've kind of got over the years, but I would suggest that when you start to look at this zoning from C Street to Commercial Street, you know, that particular area already has two restaurants. One's a nonconforming grandfathered restaurant, and that's the Vista Del Mar. And the other restaurant, Jack's, was put in in violation of city codes and of the grant from the EDA grant to build that facility. And so for fishermen, restaurants are gentrification, but we have lots and lots and lots of waterfrontage from C Street up past the bridge in the other direction. And, you know, we have one restaurant in that whole stretch. So I would just ask people to think about the possibility of having zoning and zoning language that promoted those kind of the working waterfront in that area. And I always use the example, we don't ask George Smith Bauer to put, you know, a fresh freeze in his sawmill, and I can't put my car crushing business next to St. Joseph's Hospital. So we choose as a community to use different things in different areas. And I hope that that's how this will go. I'm excited about your conversation. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else here like to make a comment? All right, we'll move to Zoom, which I cannot see, so I'll let you. There are no hands.
If anybody on Zoom wants to speak to this item, they can raise their hand.
Or just unmute them or yourself. Sometimes, I can't ever find the raise hand on Zoom, so. Oh, they can't. I can't, yeah, I can't see who's there.
I'm not seeing any hands.
Okay. So I guess they bring it back to us for some conversation, and then do we need to make a motion to submit to council? That's what the next step?
Yeah, so there's a standing section of the council's agenda that's for committee and commission reports. And so right now, this is a report developed by a subcommittee, and if this commission was, wanted to, yeah, make a recommendation that the commission forward the report, then it would be coming from the commission as a whole to the city council. So, yeah, there could be a vote to forward it to the, to report it, forward the report to the city council.
Okay, so an emotion to accept this report and forward it to city council. Is that what you would like?
I feel like Commissioner Kraft has the thought.
Oh, actually, I have a question because I did complicate this for noble purposes by bringing in the Economic Development Commission. I mean, they could also, the Planning Commission can forward it separately. Both commissions can forward it, is my understanding. So we don't need to, like, wait on that commission. I see Swan Asbury nodding. So, yes, and then I would say if you like what you see here, and I feel like I shouldn't make the motion or second it, but then that would be the thing, yes.
Well, I think it's important work. I think it's really good information and it's relevant to both the Planning Commission and economic development, and I think worthy of a motion.
Yeah, and I felt bad earlier because I didn't want to comment on it until we heard from the public, but I really did appreciate the way it was put together, and it's not easy to do. And I think it was brilliant the way that you approached this task, which is so nebulous. And I think you really zeroed in on some of the key issues. And I really liked that you included the long-form, you know, interviews. And even though I didn't read all of them, I don't have any worry about them being included because it's not going to be wrong or right. It's just what it is. It's direct testimony. And so, yeah, I'd be happy to forward this to the council and make a motion to do that. And to Mr. Bates's comments, I guess when we do take up land use in the future, I think it's important to recognize historical uses. So even though Jack's seafood is a new use per se, it sits in the footprint of Lazio seafood. And I think Lazio's is an example of, I wasn't here for it, but it was a beloved establishment, and it certainly had a very direct nexus with the commercial fishing fleet. And so I think that's, if I'm going to be comfortable with that type of invasion of the space along the waterfront, that would be the model we'd want to try to promote and encourage and require, you know, not so much the sort of token restaurant that sits, that abuts the shoreline or something like that. So, but anyways, yeah, to make it more clear, I move that we forward this to the city council.
I second.
Thank you.
I'd love to say a couple of more quick things.
Please.
I buried the lead a little bit on the economic development side. This is seventy-some small businesses, which we want to support, and that came around a number of times. I appreciate that the Lost Coast outpost has paid some attention to this and that they link to the report so that citizens who want to read the whole thing can get it right there. And if I had known they were going to do that, I might have taken a little bit of the spiciness out of some of the interview notes, but I think Leroy and city manager Slattery can, they're big people. They can take it, so. So in the end, it doesn't matter. All right, so.
I agree. Keeps it real.
Motion and second.
Yeah. We'll say all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I guess, press on. We'll move on to new business, which is twenty twenty-six inland zoning code update report.
Yeah, so a little context on this. This is just a discussion item. It's, it will be coming back to the Planning Commission for a public hearing, hopefully in January. The, what precipitated this was a number of conversations about our design review process and standards. And so we began working on an inland zoning code update to address that request of council. And then it ended up starting to impact a number of sections. And we have this really long list of code updates that we've, staff has tracked that we would like. And so then it made sense to wrap in a more comprehensive update along with this design review process. But then I realized it's a lot. So I'm bringing it in sections for us to discuss before we actually have the hearing. And this first section is focused on the stuff that's not design review related. And so I'm just going to run through some of the key stuff. But before I talk about that, one thing you have to, some background info to know about the code is that, you know, our whole city is divided into zoning districts. And then in each zoning district, there's a table that says what primary uses our land use classifications are allowed in that district. This is an example from residential zoning districts. And then in the Article Five of the zoning code, there's a definition for each use classification. And in our old coastal zoning code, they were really specific, like stamp collecting shop or, you know, and in our new code, they're much broader. It's general retail, small. And then it tries to be, it tries to make it so that each use is distinct. So if two uses maybe overlap, it carves out the difference between them to try to make it so that most things would only fit in one use category, which is a tough challenge. And so there's the, the other thing to know is in addition to primary uses, there's accessory use allowances. So a primary use is considered the main use of the site, and a site can have multiple independent primary uses. You know, you could have a restaurant on the ground floor and then apartments above. And each primary use is subject to its own permit requirements. Accessory uses, they're subordinate and dependent on one of the primary uses. And there's limitations in our code on accessory uses. So they can't, in many cases, they can't take up too much space. You know, there's limitations to make them truly subordinate. And so for instance, office space is often included in, you know, a manufacturing operation or in the back of a retail store that you don't have to get a permit for. It falls, it's considered a component of the primary use. So Target just has to come in for, you know, their permit for their retail use, and then their office in the back is considered just an accessory use. That's a component of that primary use, and it doesn't need its own permits. So that's some background information. There's a third category that's temporary uses, that things sometimes fall into, where it's not allowed in the table, but it's only operated for a short period of time, and we consider it a temporary use and allow it. So with the code update, some, we're proposing to make some changes to use classifications. We're proposing to remove timber production and harvesting as a use classification because now we regulate tree removals in the tree removal and Gulch Greenway regulations. And it was historically timber harvesting had to get a conditional use permit. And if you look at what findings you have to make for a conditional use permit, it does not, they don't make sense for tree removal. So now we have a tree removal permit you need and there's finding specific to tree removal. Like, is this going to cause erosion? Is this gonna, you know, stuff that makes more sense for tree removal? Um also, we had a recycling collection facility use separate from a recycling processing facility use. And it was only allowed in industrial and service commercial. But really, we found that recycling collection is something that a lot of grocery stores or um gas stations or wherever would want to install. So instead, we want to regulate it as an accessory use and allow it more broadly as long as it's accessory to a place that sells cans and things. Then we're also proposing to add two new use classifications. Um one is renewable energy facility to allow us to um not have to make this easier to approve. Right now, it falls under public utility, public utilities are often a conditional use. So instead, um if it falls under renewable energy facility, it would be like a minor use permit or no or principally permitted. Um where it so faster permitting process to promote this use type. Um and then also outdoor visitor serving markets. They currently fall under outdoor retail. And um when we were writing the code, there was a lot of discouragement of outdoor retail in a lot of eureka because they were concerned about um car sales. And they were thinking about, you know, selling big products outside and how that would affect our pedestrian character. Um and so we unintentionally don't allow uh outdoor visitor serving markets in a lot of places where it seems like they'd be appropriate and are more pedestrian friendly. Uh you know, so it it makes sense to carve them out as their own use. They're also something, you know, like for instance, you can't have outdoor retail in Henderson Center. There's a vacant parcel there and somebody wanted to do uh outdoor market there where there was various vendors selling things. And we had no use to permit that under. Um but it it really makes sense is more of an interim use in in districts where you have a vacant site and you're not ready to build a structure on it. It's a way to activate that site relatively easily as in interim sort of way. Go ahead. Yeah, you guys can ask questions as I'm talking, for sure.
Yeah, it without with with temporary uses that you mentioned earlier, is does the code? I saw the code's definition for accessory use, but does the code have a definition for temporary uses?
There's a temporary use section in article three and um some temporary uses are allowed by rights. Some require a business license.
Some require a building permit.
And there's various time periods for different temporary uses.
So is it safe to say that the temporary uses are not really like vaguely defined, they're kind of parsed out into categories like the rest of the uses?
Yeah, there's like onsite construction yards and equipment, garage sales, portable moving and storage containers, dumpsters, outdoor fundraising events, catering, RVs.
Seasonal sales.
There's another, there's an other temporary uses category too.
Because I I mean, like, we're looking at, you know, I don't know, it's hard to say, it looks like the farmer's market slides, right? And then there's the Friday night markets, you know, those are pop up kinds of situations like under the zoning code, where would they fit?
Well, those usually happen in the right of way and the zoning code, we're regulating what's happening on property, on parcels, you know? So it's more, I'm thinking more about things like um more permanent sort of
Sure, sure, sure.
Uh like food truck pods that end up becoming somewhat of a permanent thing versus only being there for a month or something.
The right of way stuff is kind of flies under the radar.
The right of way stuff is separate, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just talking about if you want to do it on a parcel.
Well, in the spirit of like, it seems like we were not set up code wise for like a uh uh what is it, inclusionary zoning kind of approach, you know, because it's so sparse parsed out, you know, into things. I mean, I'm sure we have versions of that. But it just seems like uh, you know, if if temporary uses were were not so tightly boxed or if there was a generalized like catchall for things that don't fit in one of the categories, then you would have room to use discretion to be like, well, it's not enumerated, but it's consistent with the spirit of the limitations on its temporary nature.
Yeah, we do have that.
Okay.
We have a sort of determination of use not listed uh provision.
Right. I remember doing a permit for Synapsis for that, yeah, when they were in their old location. Before I was on, yeah, but uh yeah, that was what we had to do.
And it says it's when the director determines that a proposed use is equivalent to a listed use.
Isn't it a use permit though? Or is it still a use permit?
No, uh that in the, when we did a determination of use not listed when I was here, it was for the coastal zone and it was quite a process. But in the inland zoning code, it's just a director determination, but I have to make it in writing. Um and I may refer it to the planning commission for review and final decision.
Okay, I think it used to be before the code updated, I think it was a use permit. Because I came to the the planning commission with Synapsis to to do that back at their old spot. Okay, well, that's helpful. I sorry, thanks for uh humoring me on that because I, yeah, I was curious when you were talking about the markets and stuff.
Yeah, some of these code updates are not a hundred percent necessary because we found creative ways to interpret things. But my my thought is that whenever there's, why not spell out the interpretation in the codes instead of having, you know, whenever we can to just make it extra clear. And that brings us to this renaming use classifications, like trails already fall under parks and playgrounds, but I just wanted to call them out as being allowed, you know, even though I would already put them under this classification, sorry.
I have a question about the recycling collection facility being removed. Um would that apply to Hawthorne and to the commercial recycling um collection age or collection businesses? I would believe the Hawthorne would fall under the collection and processing, so which is different than collection. So the collection is literally just collecting it and you're not sorting it onsite. So thinking of recycle vending machines. So we had the a lot of like, it started with the co-op and they wanted to collect some recycling, but they weren't really sorting it there, right? They were just taking it so they wouldn't get a fee from the state for not collecting it. And we scrambled trying to figure out how to allow them to do that because the collection was not allowed in that zoning district and we thought that that was silly. So we should allow these uh the collection at least because then their package, then they're sent in, you know, combined somewhere else to be processed like at the uh transfer station or over at the fairgrounds now.
And that's a separate use type called recycling processing facility.
Okay.
Which include, it says, "A facility that receives and processes recyclable materials. Processing means preparation of material for efficient shipment or to an end user specification by means of baling, briquetting, compacting, flattening, grinding, crushing, mechanical sorting, shredding, cleaning and remanufacturing. Includes salvage yards, upcycling and vehicle salvage and wrecking." And um that's that use is only allowed in a few zones.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh correct me if I'm wrong, but with the outdoor markets, I think one of the things I think I read in the staff report was or in the discussion was that it was viewed as a sort of potential interim use, is that right? In in the context of it, like like in justifying it in certain like?
I just that I use that as a justification for allowing it in certain zones.
Right. Now, we don't have anything in the code, like we've talked about temporary uses, accessory uses, interim uses standalone. Is there anything in the code?
There isn't, so we can, we that we have no provision that would guarantee that it would be interim. Um and we're going to talk about each zoning district and and what we're adding as uses so we can discuss.
Right, I just as a concept, because it's just like, just trying to think about those, you know, while we're thinking at the higher level.
Yeah, there's no interim use designation, like the county has on their coastal dependent industrial land where you um interim uses can only be there for a certain amount of time, right?
And your permit.
And they can't make certain investments. This, we're not putting any of those limitations on that outdoor visitor serving markets. Was there another question?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Propping my head up.
Um so then we're also renaming RV parks to add and campgrounds because that wasn't included in any use type. And you know, that um when we we permitted, we reviewed on the waterfront, included some camping. Um and then we made some changes to the definitions of the use types to be consistent with state law. Um including, you know, it's getting harder and harder to distinguish single family and multifamily housing because single family now can include up to four units, so trying to explain that. Um and then uh there's a provision in state law now that if you have employee housing with uh six or fewer people, it needs to be treated as single family housing. Um so we had, we put that into the definition of single family housing. And then there's some language that we added to emergency shelter definition to be consistent with language that's in state law. Although arguably, all that was already allowed under our definition, it just wasn't said exactly as it is in state law. And I'm just getting gearing up for the housing element and I want to show compliance as easily as possible. Alright, residential zoning districts, a big change that's being proposed is um right now the only way you can get a neighborhood serving commercial use is uh with a zoning code amendment to add a neighborhood market overlay to your site. And that takes three uh meetings and is quite expensive. So we're trying to change it so that now if you want a neighborhood market in a residential zone, it would just be a conditional use permit. And um mostly, we're not changing any of the rules. Accidentally changed the hours of operation limitation, I didn't mean to do that, CRTP pointed it out. I am gonna just change it back. Um CRTP also said they didn't like the bars prohibition. And I wasn't gonna change that and you know, unless there's discussion about it here. Um the one additional rule that we added um that I'm interested in your thoughts on is that for new um corner markets and things, um limiting them to either a corner parcel or a parcel on a non-local street. And I that's a common regulation for corner markets and residential zones. Um just because you're bringing um vehicles and uh customers to a location. And so the argument for corner lots is that they have two sides. And then the argument for the larger streets is that like they're, they already are tra- high traffic hit traffic streets, I guess. And um and so then allowing interior uh parcels on those more high traffic streets to also have a commercial use. And sorry, stepping back, you can also have a commercial use if it's if it qualifies as a home occupation, but that's pretty limited, like you can only have a few customers or a few vehicle trips generated per day. Whereas this would be like a new primary use, uh like you could even get a restaurant in a um neighborhood.
I'm seventy percent sure I know what this means, but what's the definition of a non-local street? When is it big enough to be non-local?
That's this map here, so this is showing, this is from our general plan, which is what the new regulation references. And it's so silly, this is uh because all of our streets are just a grid of streets, right? Uh and this is how traffic engineers, they have to classify streets. So they've um anything on here that isn't white, so all the colors are the non-local streets. And then the white streets are the local streets.
That was dumbed down to the perfect level for me.
So is the thought that it's safer to have these markets on the busier streets?
More that like the, just thinking about who's going to be upset about somebody coming in with a market and it might be somebody with a quieter street that doesn't have, that isn't built and designed for higher traffic. Um like H and I are considered major arterials and they have, you know, bike lanes and wide sidewalks. And so the thought is that, you know, if you open a bakery on an interior lot on HRI, they can handle the additional people. But if they open a bakery on your street, that's a local street, that's like a cul-de-sac down a dirt road, uh that would be trickier. But I'm open to taking it out.
I was kind of surprised we didn't hear from Colin more about that just because, you know, you were looking for pedestrian safety, right? And the point is like for a corner market to be able to get to it on like a non-motorized use. So there is like a da- more danger, like I just think about like Harrison K and there's that cross at Harris and it's always a little bit dicey. But you know, when you get to a market that is like a more off the beaten path, that they do seem a little more accessible by non-motorized.
Saying that like it would almost be better if they were not on the busier streets.
I think I I think that yes, there's an argument for that.
I agree. Um I think about C and V market, which is in my neighborhood. It's not on a corner and it's not on one of your, it's on one of the white streets. And it's very convenient for everybody and a lot of people walk to it. I I live on H Street, I don't want a corner market next door.
Alright, I'm I'm open to removing this standard.
One maybe way to split the baby is just to just make it easy on the high traffic or the highly designed streets and then maybe make it just subject to like director level, like a notification to surrounding property owners and and then a ministerial or administrative approval or something like that as a.
So so allow it everywhere, but make the permitting process a little.
You're off the the main streets, then you gotta go through a public notice and administrative review.
How it's written now is that any any commercial use would need a conditional use permit to establish in a neighborhood. So are you anticipating like allowing some without a noticed public hearing?
I guess that would be the way to to make it easier for the, if we're saying those are the preferred places in terms of less likely to meet objection, the ones on the major streets, uh major and minor arterials, uh then then making it easier on those streets and just slightly less easy, making it the same standard as as it currently sits for the, making it loud everywhere regardless of the street, but easier on the major and minor.
I think that not requiring a notice public hearing for one of these, regardless of what street, is going to upset people way more than removing this standard.
I just needed to say it out loud to him, really, so it was bad, I guess. So yeah, I don't know, I I do, I do agree to some extent that yeah, it is maybe over correcting to just focus it on to these ones.
You guys have convinced me, I I want to remove this.
I I would then to revisit the bar section and I think um mainly because I I agree with Colin in that same way that, you know, that you do want people on foot, right? If you're going to go that that it does encourage community and also um the ABC does have moratoriums on some of the styles of licenses and they would be subject to like a a review, right? At the time that they decided to put it in, so you could almost like let the neighborhood shake that out if they decided a bar was specifically, you know, uh appropriate for the neighborhood.
Yeah. I did have a question about, it's not really a question, it's more of a comment, but would, do you know exactly what what's going on with the one in my neighborhood? And that is there, there's a uh, it was an Asian market, it was on Booner and I want to say Spring. Uh it's been remodeled in the last two, three years. Does not appear to be ever going to be a market again, you know, like it.
Yeah, we got a request for a daycare to open there.
So a commercial use, sort of, but not.
Uh yeah, and it was an allowed use already in the zoning district for daycare. And I think there's actually a state law that prohibits us from requiring discretionary permits for daycares.
Oh yeah, even in residential zones. But I guess to me, like situations like that where something has a historical precedent and it's being transitioned away to a different use that, you know, is exactly counter to what we're trying to facilitate here, it'd be nice to like have a a way back, you know?
Yeah, so it is written that if you're um if you were historically a neighborhood market, if you are currently, then you, there's no use permit required, you're permitted. And you can continue and it can change hands. And then if you were at one point, we have a table for that and then they only need a minor use permit versus a conditional use permit.
And a minor use permit can be just on that stop level?
Unless somebody requests a hearing with the planning commission.
Right, okay.
So you can happen, you can continue if you've already been, but if you let it run fallow, you have to resurrect it with a minor use permit.
Correct. Correct. Do you wanna just, anyone that historically was, just have them all in one table as?
Yeah, I, I, I think so. I mean, that would be to me like the lowest level of intrusion cause it has historical precedent and it's, you know, not to bring to new development, you have an existing building footprint, their position, I don't know.
It, the thing is, I feel like the devil's in the details of, of what use type it's gonna be and how it's gonna be operated. So I, it makes a lot of sense if it's already something to let it continue to be that. But let's say it was a market, it's hasn't been used for a while and now somebody's coming in to make it a bar. You know, if, if that gets added to the list of, I feel like
No, I, I think I, I think in my mind, I was just thinking of a market. Like ba- basically carve out to like return to a use that was abandoned or replaced, you know? But that use in particular, not any
Just that specific use, not any commercial use.
As far as I know, none of the corner markets in Eureka ever had alcohol distribution as part of their, I mean, they might've sold alcohol for offsites use, but not for, yeah, no, I, yeah, just returning to a corner market, that's the only thing.
I like the idea. I have to think through like how challenging that will be to incorporate.
And I have a great uh, report written by a woman named Mary Lou Lorenza that uh, inventories all the markets in Eureka.
Because our second table that has the addresses, but not what, that's, so table two oh four dash five shows properties with prior neighborhood serving commercial uses and it just has APNs and addresses and it doesn't tell me what the use was.
Yeah, I thought I saw that table.
There's, the first table is ones that are still commercial uses that exist and it says what the existing use is. But the ones that were prior and no longer, that, that table doesn't tell me what the previous use was. So I need, you know, a historian to research that for me and then
Well, what if, I mean, granted, I, you know, where I work, we don't have that level of like cen- census for non-conforming uses being formally acknowledged in the code. But um, you know, I mean, I think the evidence will be the building itself, right? The, the appearance and materials and then
Yeah, we know which buildings here. We have a list of the previous buildings.
List, you'd be able to, you could, you could, you could construct that from like evidence that is still rela-
Yeah, the struggle is if we're saying you can go back to what your prior use is, that, that's not a physical thing, that's a use thing. Like what, what was operating there? We'd need a photograph or a sign or something or some knowledge of what the use was.
I mean, it could put the burden on the applicant to do that, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, and just make sure that it's, you know, presented as evidence and then it's a director determination if it's sufficient evidence. Instead of trying to like nail down every single one and get them all right, you know, like I don't know, just trying to think, uh, yeah, cause when I saw mine going, the one in my neighborhood going away, I went, ah, that sucks. But you know, they gotta do what they gotta do. They get to choose different uses. But it would be nice if it could, you know, it'd be a prime location if anyone ever had the interest to return to that. And it would be too, it'd be a shame if they had to go, maybe that would be the difference, like having to go through a minor use permit process would be, ah, you know, forget it, I don't wanna.
I'll think, I'll think of through whether I can incorporate that idea, but I, I, I hear where you're coming from.
Alright, thanks for entertaining that discussion.
Um, then mixed use zoning districts. Last time we did a cleanup amendment, we added allowance for new single-family homes with a footnote ten that said only if in conjunction with a non-residential primary use. And then we discovered that the definition of multifamily housing includes one or more units in conjunction with a commercial use. So we're like, oh, it falls under multifamily already, mixed use and live work. And it was really confusing people to see the uh, single family principally permitted because um, that's something that comes up a lot. People would like a single-family home in these mixed-use districts and we no longer allow that. Um, unless it's in con- it's one or more units in conjunction with a commercial use. Um, so it's, it's not changing anything substantively, it's just how it's written. Um, and then we discovered a California government code section that says that supportive housing must be permitted by right in all zoning districts where multifamily and mixed-use housing are permitted. And so that requires us to, you know, in our mixed-use zoning districts, multifamily is principally permitted, so supportive housing needs to be principally permitted. Um, which in our code is called non-medical care housing. And the last thing is that in Henderson Center right now, residential uses require a conditional use permit. And we recently went through a process with planning commission where somebody was proposing a doctor's office with a unit in the back and they had to go through the conditional use permit process just for that one unit. And um, this is the question of restrictive zoning. Um, and we made hospital medical really restrictive uh, zoning with the hope that that would then encourage, you know, space to be available for office for medical purposes. Um, and so the question is whether, um, but a lot of the district is filled with housing. Um, and people wanna build housing there and we have a housing crisis. So um, including housing for, you know, we have an issue of housing for doctors and um, and medical care professionals in general. Um, so that was our thought on making, changing our ways and making housing principally permitted in Hen- in um, the hospital medical district.
Harrison, not Henderson Center.
Did I say Henderson Center? I'm sorry. Hospital Medical District along Harrison.
Here's just a thought, I, uh, what, what about if we like, it's not calling it a bluff, but you say, okay, you wanna build housing, but you need to do it at a higher density than just a single-family home.
They do, they can't, they have to do uh, multifamily, yeah. New single-family homes are not permitted in any of the mixed-use districts unless they're in conjunction with a non-residential primary use. So that one unit would have, because it came with a doctor's office, would count as multifamily and would be allowed principally permitted.
We call that multifamily just cause it's mixed with a different use?
Yeah, the definition of multifamily includes one or more units in conjunction with a commercial use. Because, because we wanna promote live work, you know? There's been so many situations where somebody has a really small site and they have an office in the front and they only have room for like one unit in the back. And we don't wanna prevent them from having the one unit in conjunction with the commercial use.
Okay, fair enough.
Alright, industrial zoning districts. The funny thing is this is our, this is the entirety of our industrial zoning in our inland um, portion of our city. It, we just have a tiny bit of hinge industrial. And um, the changes to industrial would be adding the outdoor visitor-serving market, market use as a conditional use. Um, I was thinking there, you know, if, if you wanted to, it's not industrial. Um, and, but if there's a conditional use per- permit process, we could, y- you all could impose as a condition a time limit on it or something like that. Um, and then instructional services is like uh, people doing music lessons or dance classes. Fitness studios are already allowed conditionally in this zone. We've had a music instructor who wanted to move into this zone. Um, again, this is the question of restrictive zoning and whether you wanna just only allow industrial uses in this zone or be more flexible. This couple blocks is struggling and that's why we're proposing a little bit more flexibility. Um, trails, we wanna principally permit everywhere regardless of zone because they're just like roads. Um, they're needed everywhere to provide access to the uses. And then renewable energy facilities would be allowed here under the changes. Um, and then there's currently a
Renewable though, like pertinent to, not like independent?
Independent.
Could you define land hinge for me, please?
Oh, yeah. The only industrial land is got the hinge industrial zone zoning. So the, there's three industrial zoning districts that we have and this area is zoned hinge industrial. And the
Define hinge industrial for me, please.
Sure, so the
Is that just the name of that little section?
That's just the name of the zoning district.
Oh, yeah, and you should read this as a sentence instead of individual thoughts. Okay, I didn't realize it was the name of the district.
Yeah, I made this PowerPoint this morning in an hour, so it's
No, it's fine, I just
The, yeah, so it, the purpose of the hinge is to provide an area for low-intensity manufacturing and very limited commercial uses close to Eureka's historic core area. The primary purpose of the zoning district is to provide a location for manufacturing uses. Uh, secondarily allows upper, upper floor residential and office uses to increase housing opportunities and support a dynamic employment area that can evolve and adapt over time.
Thank you, I just didn't realize that hinge was the name of the, that area.
And right now there's a use permit requirement for artisan manufacturing, which just seems like a mistake to me. So we took that out and now it's principally permitted. Um, public facilities, uh, we added non-commercial places of assembly as a allowed use, which seemed like an omission and the renewable energy facility, parks and rec zoning. Um, we added RV parks and campgrounds as a conditionally permitted use. And um, public utilities weren't allowed and I found that weird because we have lift stations and things like that in our parks. So I added it as a conditional use. Um, and then we made miscellaneous changes to our supplemental use regulations, which are additional regulations related to specific uses. Um, adding some, the recycling collection facilities clearly to accessory uses as well as community service activities like warming centers at churches. Um, consolidating, um, permitting. So OpenGov, our online permitting system is really frustrating in that you, when you fill out an application for one permit, it, it won't copy that same information over into another permit. Um, so right now, for instance, you'll need, if you're doing a sign that involves um, electronics, you're gonna need a building permit and a sign permit. And you have to basically give all the same information and fill out two applications and upload them separately. Um, and so we're trying to consolidate so that we don't have a separate planning permit for things. Instead, we do a zoning clearance on the business license or the building permit. So they just apply for one thing and then we, it gets referred to planning to make sure it's consistent with the code. Um, then we added a little caveat to home occupations to just give people a heads up that if they're gonna have customers, they might have to make ADA upgrades cause this is an issue that comes up all the time and uh, people are caught off guard by it. And um, we removed size requirements for tiny houses on wheels because we already have a requirement that they have to be registered with the DMV and the DMV has size requirements, so it didn't make sense for us to also have size requirements. Uh, and then this is the vacation rental stuff. Uh, so the proposal is to change the distinction between, right now, anything in a residential zone is considered a vacation rental and subject to the vacation rental regulations. And anything in a mixed-use zone is commercial lodging. Even if it's on wabash and it's a house being used as a vacation, a short-term rental, it's called commercial lodging. And that just logically doesn't make sense um, to us, you know? We think if you're converting a, a residence into a short-term rental, that should be called a vacation rental regardless of district. Um, if you're doing something where you then, you're, you're triggering the commercial building code and you're, and you're doing ADA upgrades and you're making a full-on motel, then you're a commercial lodging, you know? If you're still being covered under the residential building code and you don't have to do any upgrades and you're just, you know, that's vacation rental regardless of district. Um, this would also mean that if and when the council adopts a cap on full-unit rentals, that um, full-unit rentals in the mixed-use districts would be, would be under that cap. Um, and then changing the types of vacation rentals so that um, it's instead of proprietor on site, no proprietor on site, it's home share versus full unit. Um, so that if and when there's a cap, any full unit would be under the cap. You'd have to be, you know, proprietor on site and you're sharing rooms to not be under the cap, like you're just sharing rooms.
Or a historical structure.
And we added an exemption from the cap for historical, listed on the local register because we're looking for ways, carrots to incentivize and support people who have homes on the local register.
This part warmed my little heart.
And then uh, we added some update. So if they have out-of-compliant outdoor lighting, they'd be required to update it and out-of-compliance waste storage or, um, and we added a one long-term bicycle parking space, which literally could just be space that's set aside in their garage. It doesn't need to be anything fancy.
And those are just conditions that we see on these ones routinely, right? They're just being embedded in the code now.
Yeah, we're just embedding them in the code.
I like the home share full unit too, cause it also adds consistency with like how you would rent one of those units on Airbnb or VRBO sites. So it makes really clear, it's like that change.
Good. And then um, instead of having multiple permits, some which won't run with the land and some that don't, we're just saying it's one approval that we're calling a business license. And it's not transferable. And then since I sent this out, I added clear language too to say that it has to be a property owner that applies. It can't be the management company um, that applies for the, so it's, it's specific to a property owner and a property. And um, because so much of how these perform doesn't ask, have to do with the use type, it has to do with how it's being operated, so. And then
Okay, I have a question.
Yes.
If, and I, I know this cause it happened, uh, if somebody's renting a property and living in a property and sharing the home that they rent, would they apply with the sanction of the property owner as a home share?
So they're renting it short-term for thirty days or less?
But they wanna sublease the
Suble- lo- long-term is not being regulated, right? This is only if you're renting
No, 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 this is, they'd be short-term rental, they'd be running a short-term rental out of the house that they rent.
So there's a long, a permanent tenant who's then taking one of the rooms that they rent and they're subletting it on a short-term basis.
Correct.
They could not be the, they, they could not be the applicant. Uh, the licensee, I mean, the licensee would have to be the property owner.
But could it be approved as a home share in that context or would it need to be the property owner living on site?
The property owner doesn't have to be on site, they have to be the licensee though.
Okay.
So they'd have to be aware of it and support it and be willing to take on the liability of being the licensee.
Okay, I just wanted, so, so it wouldn't preclude that scenario if somebody was renting a house and wanted to sublease on a short-term basis?
It doesn't, no, it doesn't say the owner has to live on site. It just says that the owner is the licensee. Cause right now we have property management companies that have uh, pulled licenses for various parcels and then it's really hard to track, cause they're just giving us uh, an amount of TOT for all their properties. And so I'm just thinking forward to a cap and, and thinking about how hard it is to track these things. It'll be way more easy if it's like, we know who owns what property and we can see that they're the licensee and then we can track if
Yeah, and I don't have any problem with that. I, I think it's just, I'd, I'd wanna treat the, the tenant scenario the same as if they were the owner. I, that's I guess the main thing. I wouldn't want them to be precluded from being viewed as a home share just because it wasn't the property owner living on site, it was someone else.
Oh, yeah, cause it says proprietor on site for home share, it doesn't say property owner. But I will double-check that. I get what you're saying now. Um, and then we added the, a limit on the number of full-unit rentals per lot and then a limit, a separation between full-unit rentals on separate sites.
I have to say, when I read this part, I had mixed feelings, but
I have to say when I read this part I had mixed feelings but I think you know what comes before us here and the amount of anger and emotion around I don't want another one next to me or I don't want any I I I like where you came down to try to make it reasonable
yeah we it's now stalled but we got an application recently for six on one property and we're like whoa a lot of separate that's you're essentially running a hotel then you know but you're getting to fall under the residential building code and not having to make any upgrades
and I like the I think you said it in the the report or the table that like if you're in a zoning district where you can do commercial lodging you don't need to be subject to the cap or the restrictions because there is no limit in that context but you need to build it to a commercial standard that seems fair
yeah that all that all seems very well thought through to me
am I correct that there's no cap in effect right now
correct doesn't seem to be on the uh council's radar and I I wonder if it's because all of the vacation rentals come to you guys and not to council
before you move on from vacation rentals there was one thing that I wondered okay uh this is number sixteen in the table add a requirement that all vacation rental advertisements include the applicable city business license number and clarify that advertising unlicensed rentals is prohibited so I mean I like it in concept but I worry that it's maybe a little bit onerous and cumbersome to folks you know when you're paying for an ad or whatever you know you only get so many words and now you gotta say license number da 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 right like with your listing I obviously on Craigslist and stuff like that it's not a big deal I don't know is it is it really critical I I was I was more curious to see what my fellow commissioners thought I just as much as I wanna really make it clear you know I wanna make it easier for staff to be able to figure out who's who's complying who's not I mean I'm not sure that this is gonna be the the key way of doing that you know
telling them that they need to have their business license number listed in their advertisements I thought it was some jurisdictions make them posted in their window and I felt like that was aggressive
I guess help me understand how it's gonna make your guys' job easier and sorting out the compliant from the non-compliant
because host compliance gives us a list of all the operating ones and often their address is different than our situ address or it takes a while to square their list with what I have our our list of permitted vacation rentals to find so if if the listing sites that they were watching hat you know if that was something they were pulling then I could more easily see it's also just a disincentive monitoring this and going after people that are not paying TOT and being licensed is so much work that I'm like how do I disincentivize that more you know and so it becomes a lot more sus if you're not displaying your business license if all the permitted ones are and and you happen to be the one that isn't displaying a business license maybe it's easier to route root them out or just then they're like oh man all my competitors have a BL number next to their advertisement and I don't maybe I should come in and get permitted and pay my TOT
yeah well I mean I'm not gonna go to the mat on this one I just thought it could be a little bit
but what is the concern that it's like gonna cost them more money to put BL number five six seven eight two on their advertisement
I'm not super concerned it just seems like maybe not the most practical approach to making it easier to tell the legal from the illegal you know um but
I think if we were talking about like mostly printed advertising I would agree with you that inches get really precious but if this is all virtual uh I don't I don't see it as being that onerous
and honestly I kinda like them having to put their business license in their window frankly but
well yeah and I could see it being an asset to some customers like oh I I can trust this is a compliant you know unit cuz it's clearly got you know people become more shrewd about that so it might be more desirable than undesirable but is there any way for them to like register with host compliance if we're gonna continue to subcontract with like all the other jurisdictions with this one third-party you know whatever monitoring tool or whatever uh couldn't they just like go straight to the horse's mouth or whatever so they knew these are all I don't know maybe both can happen I don't know just the thought you know since that's where we're pulling our data from that we're using for monitoring and all
do you have any concept of how many unpermitted units there are
yeah there's eighty permitted and there's you know somewhere around thirty unpermitted probably uh based on you know host compliance sees about a hundred and twenty but like twenty of those are hotels marketing on Airbnb and so once I pull it apart and a lot of them are on the same property too so once I boil it down it's it's not too many that are but it's a ton of TOT you know
yeah can you go after the people you find on the Airbnb site
yes so we finally have a list of all the permitted ones it took forever to and then we have we've sent letters to all the ones and that we got through this backlog of all the letters and then we've we just sent another round of letters of new ones that have popped up since we addressed our and soon we're gonna go to council we're dealing with the legality so there's there's ones that even though we've sent them angry letters they haven't responded and so we're looking into do we lean the property are we able to assess them um how do we go about it and I'm really hoping that gets to uh council soon because I feel terrible that some people have come into compliance and paid a bunch of money and then others have not and are ghosting us
Commissioner Craft did do a report on it not was it maybe a year ago but I don't know if there's an easier way to get that to her rather than like looking back in old meetings I don't know you have easy access to that report
I would appreciate it thank you
alright last thing I think is outdoor lighting um so whenever we refer uh projects to Calfor Department of Fish and Wildlife they always recommend warmer lighting uh because of the impacts of the white blue lighting on wildlife and um so we I think the biggest thing with the updates to outdoor lighting is starting to talk about this idea of the color of lights um apparently also the white and blue light is bad for dark sky as well like it scatters more and it's obnoxious when you're driving anyway uh so we already have some exemptions from our outdoor lighting standards uh we the proposed changes add a special events exemption and they add a color temperature max for string lights and then we got a letter from Waterkeeper recommending that we remove our existing public agency and utility exemption
did you agree with Waterkeeper's analysis on that that it it wouldn't have an in fact impact on current things I mean my simple mind went to like stadiums uh par- parks being used for softball at night that kinda thing that you know I can I can argue both sides but it doesn't seem like no impact
yeah I there is an exemption a separate exemption for sports but I also you know one of the standards is a sixteen-foot height limit on poles and I'm sure Caltrans's poles are higher than sixteen feet I mean Caltrans wouldn't be they'd be exempt most public utilities are actually exempt from our zoning standards anyway because uh there's there's state level regulation that doesn't allow us to there's a lot of
that general order or whatever
but maybe the analysis is correct then I don't have any argument
for the city would be subject to the new restrictions right or
currently there's this carve-out that any public
but they're advocating to strike that
yeah they're advocating to strike that
I don't have a strong opinion I just wasn't sure that their analysis on that item was solid
and then if you don't qualify for an exemption there's another way to deviate and that's through getting applying for an administrative adjustment and certain if you meet certain criteria so we added a requirement like what the the criteria that's there and staying is for for safety reasons you can get an admin adjustment and then we just added language that if you're getting that admin adjustment for safety reasons you still have to do your best to minimize light impacts and then also we added a time period historic character character lighting justification for getting an admin adjustment if you wanted some fancy looking Victorian lights that weren't fully shielded um and you were on a you know in a historic district then we could consider an admin adjustment and then we removed this accent lighting justification that we had and we moved it as just an exception to downward facing cuz some people want lights that are face the building or a flagpole or a statue or something and um so we carved out an exemption to the the downward facing thing instead of having it in the admin adjustment
I can clarify that I was looking at outdoor lighting for one of the We Out projects today and they had there's there and I was on the Dark Sky website and there's lights now that are upcast and downcast that can still be uh compliant with the dark sky standards so if we read our code conservatively and which how how we have been we have not been allowing anyone to have any sort of light shining up at all even if it's shining onto a building so according to the Dark Sky website there are there is uplighting that complies
oh interesting um and then right now there's our outdoor lighting standards are new so there's a lot of existing legal non-conforming outdoor lighting and the only triggers right now are is if you need a use permit or if you're coming in for a building permit over a certain valuation that triggers updating your outdoor lighting so we're adding a new provision that if we can receive complaints and it's aggressively out of compliance and a nuisance that we can we can direct them to bring their legal non-conforming lighting into compliance with the current standards
so for instance a church between G and H that has very bright white lights facing north that seem to be enabling prowlers rather than preventing them because you could just go under the lights and anybody coming at like coming up G Street is blinded by those lights is that something that if say a neighborhood person wanted to complain about they could
correct and this is just it came up again and again when I was doing outreach on the Gulch Greenway ordinances people are upset about lights and then uh in terms of the lighting standards we've really struggled with applicants on building permits about what we mean by shielded and downward directed and finding this model ordinance and it had this um quantitative standard and a graphic uh we are proposing that just to help us so that it's not such a process to come to agreement with applicants about what we're talking about when we say downward facing and shielded adding the color temperature limits adding a light right now we have a light trespass limitation for is it adjacent properties or residential anyway we're yeah adjacent lots now we're adding a trespass standard for Gulch Greenway Management Area and Waterkeeper wanted us to limit that further and I don't know how I feel about that I don't know the difference between zero point one foot candles and zero point zero zero one foot candle so I'm gonna do some more research on that I just know there's a lot of properties that where we have built right up against the Gulch Greenway Management Area and people's decks you know hang off of it and so I didn't wanna prevent people from having you know minimal lighting on their decks and so yeah but I I don't know the difference between those two levels so I need to do some more research and then
well before we I mean just on that topic of like where the butts the green gulch and greenway like to me it seems like reasonable where I could see things not that I can describe it but if you have improvements in your property that your lighting then those improvements should be like exempt from even if they are adjacent to or over cantilevered over or whatever but that should be the limit of your lighting and then you know if it's at the zero point like if your net if your deck goes out over the green gulch you know then you would have lighting that's at a certain standard that would be at the periphery of the the port of the light or the improvement that would be you may you arrive at some kind of low level low lumen standard for that that scenario or whatever
I'm trying to figure out a simple way to put that into the code and that sounds very complicated
but I'm just saying I I would be comfortable with allowing people to light their decks but then be reasonable about it by setting a limit on how much you could light if you're already into a gulch and greenway or you're at the edge of it you know and then setting that based on good you know practice whatever you find or the the kinda reasonable illumination level is I mean one way that approaches like it has to be shielded and has to be directed and does not go beyond the de- edge of the deck I think that's probably not a practical way to administer it so it's gonna have to probably be a little bit of a finesse okay that's I just wanted to before we moved on
I have to think about it more
yeah and if you don't figure it out that's okay I I'm just throwing that out there
and then right now we have a sixteen-foot height limit standard for multifamily housing outdoor lighting and for parking lot outdoor lighting and we just wanted to broaden it to any outdoor lighting there's exceptions if it's um motion censored or if it's lighting your way to an upper floor or if it's you know but yeah it's just nice to have more human scale light poles and then Waterkeeper wanted us to keep our reference to the lighting being dark sky compliant as well and I think that's totally fine I can put that back in and then um we just added clarification that a lighting plan would be required we don't like to put application requirements in the zoning code but this is something we struggle with on every building permit they never put lighting specifications in it and then we always have to ask for them and so this is just for that reason last thing is we made a bunch of changes the density bonus section state law is very prescriptive about density bonuses and their regulations are very long and constantly changing and yet they have a requirement that we have to adopt an ordinance to implement their regulations and so our strategy which HCD supports is to just focus on the city's process for approving a density bonus application and pull out all of the content that is dictated by state law so that's our strategy with the updates and then also we were missing anything that said hey you need to record a regulatory agreement so we added that in because that is something that is necessary so they're getting this concession or waiver or density bonus because they are providing this benefit of affordable housing and so we need a regulatory agreement where they've recorded it saying yes we will keep this affordable for fifty-five years
have we executed any of these in recent years
lots of density bonuses yes I'd say all the um affordable housing projects have all received concessions waivers
but not not actual density bonuses they've gotten a density bonus approval for a waiver from design standards although I don't think
once I thought we did off of Harris Street that subdivision um I think we did do it once Once I thought we did off of Harris Street, that subdivision, um I think we did do it once.
Meaning where they exceeded the.
They actually wanted more units that are allowed by our code. Typically, people don't need that. But they do need some sort of waiver from a standard like a blank wall requirement or.
And to waive the standard, they have to agree to the affordability?
They have to have it a deed restricted, yeah.
Yeah, a certain amount of units too.
And uh this comes up with all of our our affordable housing projects on city-owned property. And they all prefer to do dense, state density bonuses than city, you know, admin adjustments or city-level deviations. Because there's something legally, it's.
It's less liability. You have the state backing you up. This is state law instead of local. And I can say that that's what HCD had recommended as well.
And so I think I already talked about this, but I'll bring the second part of this code update to you next time. And then hopefully we can have our hearing on it in February.
And the second part's gonna be about uh design standards?
Design standards mainly. I also realized that right now we have a design review requirement for cell towers. And then I looked at our. Our wireless facilities section and it's really out of date. And so I'm, we're also gonna be updating wireless facilities more broadly, so that's a non. It's only tangentially related to design, but I couldn't, I wasn't ready to bring it to you this time.
Does it have small cell provisions?
Exactly, we're adding small cell provisions. Are you working on that at the county?
We actually are ahead of you in that regard. It's one of the few places, I would say.
That's it. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, thank you for your thoroughness and the summation of the very lengthy report. In the agenda. All right, uh no staff reports, no other reports?
We already did that.
Then we adjourned.
I just, uh we do have people remaining in the chambers and, you know, we're not required to take in, but but I was thinking if if there was somebody who wanted to. To s- speak to this, we could, we could ask. So that's Chair. At the Chair's discretion.
I think the ship has sailed, but if somebody here would like to speak on it, sure, come on up.
And I was not shilling from my pal Ken here. I was actually thinking of the people on the other side of the room whom I don't know, but who have nicely sat through all of this.
Yeah, there's always something to learn if you'll sit through these meetings, e- even if it's not something that you're immediately um en- engaged with. Um I would just make a couple of comments on lighting, you know, Linda and I have lived over on. Indian Tulawat Gunther Islands since nineteen seventy-four. And we have watched waterfront lighting increase and increase and increase. And now what we're seeing is we're seeing uh high-high intensity LED lightings on some of the fish company buildings and and other areas. And we, you can read a book in our house at night. And there's shadows in the backyard where it where it used to be dark. I think it was in seventy-three or seventy-four, I saw the Aurora Borealis there. You would never see that now. So there's a lot of non-compliant lighting that's we're starting to see show up a water around the waterfront. And it's shocking how, because you have a reflective service, how how much that is is broadcast over a big area. So I'm glad that you guys are looking at this stuff. Thank you.
We've gotten complaints about that, not from Ken, from others.
But you don't have code, that code is isn't currently include, I would assume, dark skied. I mean, it's so old.
Yeah, I mean, currently we can only require upgrades when you need a use permit or you have a building permit that triggers non-cons. And then one of the complaints, like the Cato Fisheries, right, there was a an editorial piece or some someone wrote in about it. And I do have on my to-do list to write a courtesy letter.
That's great. Okay, uh we'll adjourn. Thank you.